I pledge allegiance to the citizens of the United States of America. We are the republic of which we stand. Our nation, our country, is indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to accept the minutes in the previous meeting, November 13th? Barb? Anthony?
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn, yes? Commissioner Gotti?
Yes.
And Commissioner McGuire?
Yes.
Commissioner reports, just a couple of quick things. Obviously, most of you know, we had the holiday train here. It was a big success. It gets bigger every year, more people every year. I want to thank the community center, and I want to thank all the volunteers that were there helping out that night. I want to especially thank the Yelts Club. They sacrificed that night because that's their bingo night, and they don't have a problem giving it up, so we can use their lot. So, thanks to the Yelts. And then, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. That's all I have. Commissioner Dunn?
Okay. Just short and sweet, just a reminder to everyone that on the first of every month, you get a 5% additional penalty on water bills that have not been paid, and we're also right now looking into a re-levee fee. What that means is we have a lot of customers that don't pay their spring and or fall bill, and come January, they still have not paid their water bill. So, that ends up getting re-leveed under their taxes. Some people do it every single year, no matter what. So, we're looking into a re-levee fee to basically give them an additional charge because that's money we're not taking in during the year, and it's, you know, obviously not a good thing for us, and it's more work for us, so we're looking into a re-levee fee. That's it.
Christopher Gohanyi?
I have nothing to reply for, sorry.
Commissioner Gotti?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you to everybody who cooperated with the snow removal and then ongoing for a few days now on the side streets, the snow streets where we can't get the bigger equipment. That was a pretty good-sized snowstorm. A lot of people came out and said thank you. I just wanted to say thank you back. Water plant, just to give everybody a heads up, we're looking at moving forward how fast with that state of system?
Getting ready to award it.
Right, so getting ready to award that. So, that's going to be a new computerized system for our water plant. That should be coming up very soon.
Can you do me a favor, just speak up because it doesn't come over to record?
That should be coming up very soon. Hopefully, that gets done pretty quick. Our beaver problem, we've got that under control, taken care of. The reservoir is going to be good. It's actually gained a little water. I'm impressed. Other than that, I think, I'd like to say thank you to my team. They did a hell of a job this winter. So far, this one big snowstorm, I thought they did a great job. But I would like to ask everybody to take in mind when these guys are out working like that, yelling, screaming, throwing shovels in the windows of my trucks, only creates a bigger, more stressful environment for my drivers. So, I just ask everybody, please take a little bit of time, be a little patient, give us a chance, we'll get after it. So, thank you again.
Commissioner McGuire?
We had the memorial tree ceremony this past Saturday along with Santa in the park. We had 61 trees this year, which is almost double from last year. I'd like to thank Jeff over at Country Living for partnering with us again this year. Jeff ordered these trees and gave them to us at cost. We had a cutoff date of 11:15, and we have to really stick to that date because if we don't, and we ask Country Living for more trees, then he has to give us trees that he ordered to sell himself, and now he's losing a profit. So, we have to, that's why we have a cutoff date. We really have to try to stick to that. The park looks beautiful at night with all the trees lit up, so I encourage anybody to take a ride and go over and see the park. I want to give a special thank you to Kim Noonan, Kim Dunn, Eileen Day, and my son, Austin McGuire, for all their help in making the memorial trees such a success. The true heroes in all this is the Mechanical Fire Department because they came to the park two nights in a row and helped put these trees up. One of those nights, it was cold and raining, but they didn't care, and they never complained. Anytime I call Matt Dunn and ask him to help us, he always has just two questions. How many men do you need, and what time do you want us there? So, I just want everyone to know that without them, this wouldn't have been as successful as it was. And the Christmas luncheon at the Senior Center yesterday was beautiful. The event was catered by the End Zone, and the food was delicious. And I just want to say thank you to the staff at the Senior Center. They did a fabulous job at putting the luncheon together. And that's all I have.
Supervisor Richardson's not here. Chief Rabbit is excused tonight. He's at his son's Christmas thing at school. Chief Dunn, I think they have drills tonight, so they're not here. So, we will have those reports and add them into the minutes. All right, we're going to open the floor to public comment. I'm going to remind you, you have five minutes. Five and a half, five minutes. And when you get up there, identify yourself and where you live. Who wants to get up first?
I'll read it, Fish. Dave Hacks 241 first avenue. I'm going to read off a list of things here, and then I'm going to stand here and wait for the replies. What paper were the notifications put in, or when first Avenue Direction Change is going to be done? I haven't seen any. You never answered last month what led up to the motor replacement of the sweeper since it's a limited-use vehicle. And Mayor backing the thing, you should take a ride on the city bus to observe the condition of parts of the Mechanical Roads. Meter consolidation is still a topic from my point of view, and why is it not done? One meter elimination for six years, which has been going on since I've been complaining, is $1,656. That's just one meter. If it was more, it would be as many meters as it is a consolidation. Now, you said it was not cost-effective. Who and where did the prices and the evaluation come from, and what and how was the detail of operation or outline of job stay not cost-effective? Is the pipe next to the firehouse to be used for Central Avenue storm drain? As I told before, was told before the info came to me, the pipe was 18, and Mr. Gotti stated to me it was 24-inch. I measured the pipe that was there, and it's 18 inches, and there's another pipe with 10. So, it appears that there's a lot of, somebody doesn't know how to read a rule, or the specs are wrong. Why haven't various businesses and houses been cited for not clearing their sidewalks, and why wasn't the sidewalks cleared under railroad underpass in Dutch Gap? FYI, Central Avenue was originally a Champlain Canal built by the state and opened in 1823. The railroad that goes over the top of it, which was the Rensselaer Saratoga Railroad, was done in 1835. The road at the Dutch Gap was originally established by the city and when the railroad constructed an overpass over it as well as canal. There was no true streets there because of the town. There was no lift bridges south and various other streets that crossed over, but there was one at Park. The Hudson River Barge Canal was opened in 1918, which replaced the Central Avenue Canal. And in the '30s, the canal was filled by the state and converted into a roadway now called Central Avenue. The sidewalks under the underpass were put in by the state, as was the dip to allow entrances for trucks therefore belonged to the city, and the city has declared the sidewalks are maintained roadway. Period.
Done?
For this one, yep.
Okay. No, you're done.
Okay, I'll answer the motor. It's a max-force engine, twin-turbo DEF.
Can't hear you. You got to speak into the speaker so I can hear you, please?
Motor for the sweeper is a max-force, twin-turbo DEF motor. It just went under a mechanical error. It just went, it just disintegrated. Actually, the top, if I'm not mistaken, it was one of the rollers that, yeah, it was a rotor lifter that actually got swallowed down into one of the cylinders, which actually took damage and blocked. That's why we went with a long-block motor. I mean, it was just a mechanical failure. I don't know what it is you want me to tell you. I'm happy that's all it was.
Limited-use vehicle, that's what I'm saying.
It wouldn't matter if it's limited. How many people who bought brand-new vehicles have to bring them back to the dealership two weeks later because something goes wrong? It's just an act of nature. I can't, I can't give you an actual answer without lying to your face, Dave.
Okay.
What was the other thing you wanted to know?
Okay, the paper notifications for First Avenue Directions.
We decided that we were going to wait until January to put out notifications because I still had to hold the signs, new signs for the streets, but we were going to wait until January.
January 1st.
Yeah, you were going to put the signs up, but you didn't, you were going to advertise for a month of December that you were going to put the signs up. That's what you stated before.
I didn't, I don't remember saying that.
You said you had to put them, put all the notifications in the paper and everything before you put the signs up.
We did talk about notifications, but Billy Rabbit and myself both agreed that we were going to start that in January to give people enough time. You were going to put notification out, but we wanted to use the month of January to do so, so the whole city could be notified. And that's when you engaged with the idea of putting a course out there with a one-way signs, wrote a clause on it. That's how I remember that conversation.
Yeah, but your reference at the point that the meeting was for December?
No, everybody was asking for December. Me and Billy Rabbit both stated.
No, your notification for that to be put in the paper.
I don't remember the conversation going out with you.
30 seconds, Dave.
The pipe, still haven't answered the pipe.
Which fire department are you talking about?
The one up here. Or the one down here?
He's talking about the pipe for the drainage system that's in the lot next to the fire house.
It is a 24-inch pipe.
No, it ain't. You better get your rule out there and measure it, because I stopped today, it's 18.
You went out and all the measured, you measured?
Right there, I got out of the truck, went over my tent, measured them pipes, they're 18-inch and 10.
The discharge pipes for the outfall, MS-4, is what you're talking about?
If those pipes belong to that job, they're 18-inch, they're not 24. That's what I just asked you, if that pipe belongs to that job.
Time's up, Dave.
You still haven't answered the rest of them.
Well, not going to get them tonight. We'll get them some other time. Time's up.
That's why I fired them off, beheaded them.
Well, you kept talking.
I'll just say this for you, Dave. I thought you were talking about the MS-4 discharge pipe firehouse. That's in the creek, right next to the creek. That's a 24-inch line.
That's not what he's talking about, Dave. He's talking about the new lines that are going in for the Central Avenue Drainage.
He's talking about the pipe that?
The pipe that's on top of the ground.
That Anjar is basically storing over there?
Yes. Okay. Next. Bill?
Bill Clayton, 36 Underwood Avenue, and I'm going to continue on with what Mr. Hicks started. Is that project going along okay on Green Street, and will it be completed?
So far, absolutely. They've only hit two, two galvanized lines started leaking, but they were replaced with new copper. But so far, it's been moving along, actually right on schedule. I'm not even going to say they're behind.
And one other question, are all the permits in place, and we're going to complete the whole project from Central Avenue underneath the DNH overpass down the river?
As far as everything I know is right, unless anything's changed with you guys.
It's all going to be done, but we got an extension today because with the snow, there's no way they'll be done by the date that was supposed to be.
Okay.
So, the state gave us an extension, which Anthony didn't know, in a meeting with Kim and I today.
Okay, thank you. And it's a tight assumption, the asphalt plants are down for the year, or were they?
The extension's hoping to be till June, so it gives us a tough time, but she said, don't worry about it, we'll be fine.
Will Green Street be blacktop though?
I don't know if it's the whole street, or if only where it was dug. I don't know the answer to that. I believe it's where it was dug. I think so. It was not an entire street over there.
We did talk a little bit if there was money left over, but if the rids, we're going to try to overfill the whole street.
Okay. Still on the subject of the drainage, is the piping going right into Hudson River? Is that going to go from the under Green Street all the way into the river to be?
It's running into the same outfall that it ran into before, except it's going to be a new structure.
That's with the 24-inch ID drain line?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that'll satisfy me. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Next?
Hello, Ray Martin, Tommings Place Mechanical, New York. I want to pass out a diagram here to you. It's not a rose shaft test, even though it might look like that, but I'm passing out here is a zoning map for the city of Mechanical. If you look pretty closely at it, you'll notice that the area that was changed in 1990s, the price chopper isn't there. The area that was bridge over the railroad trestle wasn't there. I can see Kim squinting like she rightfully should. And if you look closely at it, even the urban renewal beside Mabbett Street, between Mabbett Street and Park Avenue, isn't there. That happened in the 1960s. If you get on a magnifying glass and look very closely at the icon on the map, at the legend on the map, you'll see that this map that we have to use for our zoning map, and the map that builders have to use when they're looking at zoning in the town, is from 1954. And recently, Kim submitted a document to Saratoga County asking for a zoning map change, and she got a nice quick reply with a disclaimer that if all the information she submitted was accurate, and it met with the memorandum of understanding, then you are approved with making a zoning map change. If we're going to make a zoning map change, I think it's long overdue to change the zoning map. It's caused confusion before. Denny's had confusion with us, the building inspectors had confusion with it, Gina's had confusion with it. And it's time for us to suck it up, I think, and put out an RFP, go to our engineers possibly, and have a zoning map updated that reflects our actual roads in the town, and make it clear where the zones are. This map that I handed out to you is as clear as you can get it on the website. If you can understand the legend of that clearly, you're better off than I am. So, it's a very difficult and challenging thing. Back when this map was done, people communicated by telegrams. I see a lot of you have your smartphones out now. There's a lot more things you can do. In fact, you can still send a telegram with your smartphone if you want to, but we don't have to be back into Telegram H. The other thing that I want to address that was addressed at your last meeting was that you had a zoning change. And the state does not like zoning changes to be done every time there's a change in council or change in feelings, so they put some restraints on what can be done for zoning change. They don't do it directly so much, they do it indirectly through the seeker process. And in the response that you got, Kim, from the Saratoga County, it responded to your map change, but it did not respond to the zoning change that the council voted on last time. So, one of the things that has to happen before you can submit that information about the actual zoning change you're proposing, is that you have to do an environmental assessment. You have to do a comprehensive, you have to tie what you've done into the comprehensive plan and show how it either works with or against the comprehensive plan. You have to do a full seeker assessment as an unlisted action. And all those things have to be done before you can resubmit or submit the changes for the zoning that you would like to do. Now, what we did with the zoning change last time, what we did with the zoning change last time is you basically went from the time when you would use a telegram to communicate to the time when you could use a smartphone to communicate. The planned development district that was there allowed everything that's going to be done for the industrial, light industrial park, only it gives the city a lot more tools, just like a smartphone would give you a lot more tools. So, we can either go back to the 1950s and have zoning that reflects that attitude in those situations that were very good for the time, or we can come up to 2020. Thank you.
Thanks. Next? Tom?
Tom Mahoney of the Express and Alden Street. So, speaking of the Green Street project for the Central Avenue Drainage, that's still online to be done by the end of the summer?
You didn't hear what I said. We got an extension actually.
Well, how long is it extension?
The extension is at least till the end of June. And they gave it because of the snow, which put us behind, and the blacktop plants are now closed, so everything needs to line up. It won't, shouldn't, I shouldn't say won't. It shouldn't take till June, but that's the amount of time they extended it, six months.
But until the asphalt plant's open, it can't get completed, right? And that would be probably March at the earliest or anything?
I would think probably March.
And I suppose we won't question why they can't?
They're hoping to have the pipe on by early January.
Right.
Pipe ending down by early January, clean it up as best we can with the weather, wait till spring, restore it, get the pavement done, get the grass grown, get the paperwork all done for June.
Thanks, Scott.
And the other question here is, we read a legal notice, maybe you're going to address this, about coming up for December 30th, about the cable, the charter communication. Can you explain all that, or?
It's a franchise agreement, and the gentleman will be here to answer any questions anybody has.
Now, that concerns the homeowners, that somebody doing, that'll be the cable for the whole city?
This was just, they pay the city monies for, for having the franchise here, so.
Okay. So, that's the one we have now, right?
Right, but it has to be written, whatever it's on.
Yeah.
All right. So, it's a pretty good?
Yeah, requires a public hearing.
I assume it's got to be done before the end of the year, that's why December 30th?
No, we're having a meeting for the budget on the 30th, so we didn't get, yeah. The paperwork wasn't approved, yeah. Not required by the end of the year, but we are.
And Tom, you can come to my office, there's a copy of the agreement there if you want to come look at it.
Okay.
Next?
Nick Granoli, 113 L.A. Avenue. I'd just like to give a shout out to Mr. Guy and his crew too, for the, I think they did a good job. You know, you hear so much, I'm out and about a lot, and you hear people complain, who's complaining? Well, one lady said the plow didn't come down my street. I happened to take a ride down by her street, they had both cars parked out, and you couldn't get a four-wheeler down there. She expected the plow to go down there, it's impossible. You know, you have to, you do what you got, and you know, I thought they did a terrific job. And Barb, those streets up in the park, I think they look phenomenal. Did a great job. It really was impressive.
Thank you.
Michael was finally getting on the ball, getting up to date, and I think it's guys who are doing a good job. And that's it.
Thanks, Peter. Anybody else? Nobody else has any comments? All right, we're going to move to the resolutions then. Okay, the first one is 9619, and it's to make Michael Burges, who is a self-certified police officer, and he's employed part-time, we're going to put him up to a full-time officer on a temporary full-time basis, just to get us through the holiday seasons with vacations and all that. So, I'll make that motion.
One second. Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn, yes? Commissioner Hany?
Yes.
Commissioner McGuire?
Yes.
9719, Ken?
Yep. Whereas the city of Mechanical commenced an action against Vicki Belier for payment on an outstanding water bill, along with interest and associated cost, and whereas said action was duly commenced by the service of a summons and complaint on said defendant on or about November 3rd, 2018, and whereas said defendant filed an answer on and about February 1st, 2019, disputing the allegations and denying that she was responsible for payment, now therefore be it resolved by the city council and City Mechanical that the stipulation of settlement between the city and the defendant dated November 25th, 2019 is hereby approved from the city attorney's authorized executive sin. Vouchers.
All right. Answer?
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn, yes? Commissioner Hany?
Yes.
Commissioner Gotti?
Yes.
And Commissioner McGuire?
Yes.
It says by December 7th. When we receive payment?
I will.
All right. Okay. Resolution 9819, approve payroll and vouchers, totally $357,735.57, and all which it is.
All right.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn, yes? Commissioner Hany?
Yes.
Commissioner Gotti?
Yes.
And Commissioner McGuire?
Yes.
It says by December 7th. When we receive payment?
I will.
All right. Okay. Resolution 9819, approve payroll and vouchers, totally $357,735.57, and all which it is.
All right. Answer?
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn, yes? Commissioner Hany?
Yes.
Commissioner Gotti?
Yes.
And Commissioner McGuire?
Yes.
Anybody have any new business? Old business?
Yes, I do. It's going to be a minute, so everyone have patience. Okay. So, I want to address something that keeps coming up, and I'd like not to be interrupted by anyone up here while I'm making these points. As we all know, on April 4th, 2018, there was a major flood here at the Senior Center. Myself and a deputy commissioner of public safety were at a free workshop at the town of Clifton Park. I received a phone call from my deputy stating that the Senior Center had a major flood. We immediately left our workshop and came directly to the Senior Center. On our way back, the deputy commissioner of public safety contacted her commissioner, which is Commissioner McGuire, and I reached out to the insurance company, as well as then after that, Quick Response. I'm sure we all know that Quick Response is a local reputable company that deals with water and sewer damage, fires, including smoke and water damage, mold issues, et cetera. They have over 25 years of professional restoration experience for homes and businesses. Now, I'd like to correct some inaccurate statements that keep going around, and assumptions that have been floating around again. I received a call the other day from Wendy Libitor of the Times Union, and she left me a message. And her message stated that Val and Commissioner Gotti stated that I had signed a check that I was not authorized to sign. And we'll get to that in just a minute. So, I want to point out that this was not the first issue in the bathrooms at the Senior Center, and that can be documented. In late February 2018, there was an issue with the toilet in the ladies' room, and I can tell you for a fact that there were issues prior to 2018 in both of the bathrooms as well. This is an insurance claim, plain and simple. Unfortunately, accidents happen all the time, and it's not something that can be controlled, whether it's an accident involving a police car, which we've had a few of, or a DPW vehicle, which we've had many of. Both of these things happen, and the insurance company's informed and a claim is put in. Sometimes I'm informed of these accidents, and sometimes I don't find out until I get a call from an insurance company, or I get something in the mail. So, the check, just so everyone knows the process, the insurance claim was put in, and that's my part in it, dealing with the insurance company. And then the insurance company gets an adjuster, and they go back and forth with the company that's fixing the building, et cetera. Now, all of you obviously weren't here at the time, but it was a huge massive flood, not a little bit of water, and it was category three contamination. That's not plain water out of the tap, all right? That's bathroom water, and that is documented. So, to say that I signed a check that was not authorized is totally not true. What happened was, we got money from the insurance company, that money was received by the city, was deposited into the account by the city. I then vouchedered the invoice for payment, which has to go to the commissioner of finance for processing. A check is cut, she signs off on the check first, then I sign off on the check. That's the process for any check and payment that's issued from the city. So, there was no unauthorized check signed, et cetera. The total dollar amount that the city had to put in was $52.71. That's it. Stuff that was damaged, as far as in the storage room, that was all replaced at full value. So, I'm really getting a little bit concerned that this keeps coming up, and that people are stating things that are absolutely not true. As a matter of fact, someone sent Wendy Libitor in a wild goose chase over to the fire department. So, she called over, they were looking for a certain individual who happens to share the same name as a certain individual that owns Quick Response. And she was led to believe that there was something shady going on. Now, again, the gentleman, the poor gentleman at the firehouse had nothing to do with the Senior Center, the insurance claim, nor Quick Response as a business. So, if someone has questions, they should come forward, but to constantly have this thrown out there, making it look like something happened that didn't, anyone that knows Jody knows that she's not going to allow something to happen, she's not going to sign a check So to say that I signed a check that was not authorized is totally not true. What happened was, we got money from the insurance company, that money was received by the city, was deposited into the account by the city. I then voucherd the invoice for payment, which has to go to the commissioner of finance for processing. A check is cut, she signs off on the check first, then I sign off on the check. That's the process for any check and payment that's issued from the city. So there was no unauthorized check signed, et cetera. The total dollar amount that the city had to put in was fifty-two dollars and seventy-one cents. That's it. Stuff that was damaged, as far as in the storage room, that was all replaced at full value. So I'm really getting a little bit concerned that this keeps coming up, and that people are stating things that are absolutely not true. As a matter of fact, someone sent Wendy Libertour in a wild goose chase over to the fire department. So they, she called over, they were looking for a certain individual who happens to share the same name as a certain individual that owns Quick Response. And she was led to believe that there was something shady going on. Now, again, the gentleman, the poor gentleman at the firehouse had nothing to do with the senior center, the insurance claim, nor Quick Response as a business. So if someone has questions, they should come forward, but to constantly have this thrown out there, making it look like something happened that didn't, anyone that knows Jody knows that she's not gonna allow something to happen, and she's not gonna sign a check that's not legitimate, et cetera, and neither am I. So, and the information that DPW could have done the job, this is no insult to DPW, I have a lot of respect for what they do, but this was a huge job. As I said, it was category three contamination, which is a biohazard, it needed specialized things to be done, and it was a huge job that if DPW even could have done it, and I'm not gonna say they could or couldn't have, as far as what their skills are, it would have taken them a long time to do it, and who would have done the regular daily workings of the DPW? And that's all I have to say on the matter.
Anybody else have any old business?
No, I'd like to respond to some of that. As far as the DPW staff, we weren't given an opportunity to come in to assess it. Two times we were in here, there was an inch of water on the floor. I haven't seen anything showing any level three, any type of bacteria, any type of contamination, any documentation as of such. I asked for it, never seen it. Number one, I never said you signed a check illegally. All I simply stated before, I wasn't given a chance to come in and do it.
Well, I have Wendy Libertour on recording, and that's her word-for-word stuff. And as far as the level three, that's something that I found out today when I'm calling Quick Response, because they yet again got dragged into something that they shouldn't be, as did the fire department.
Because, believe me, I've been receiving the same phone calls that you've been receiving. But as far as us coming in here, I do agree with you, there was many times prior to you even being a young officer, there was an issue here. I even put cameras into the lines here from Apex, we found grease and styrofoam. And the only problem I had with the idea is the water that was being flooded in here were to faulty toilet mechanisms, that wasn't dirty water coming in, that was actually clean water, because the clean water valve would not shut off.
So you're saying that Quick Response is incorrect in what they're saying?
I'm just saying, those are the three valves that Marty changed out. Quick Response is seeing the water that's backing up through the floor pipes that are in the floor and go to the trap.
It was still level three contamination.
That's the contamination they were seeing.
It was still contaminated. And if, and if DPW is not certified to handle bio, yeah, biohazards. Are they equipped to do that?
Let me ask you this question, why wasn't I given an opportunity to look into it? And if that was the case, we could have just put it out and would have been a handle of whether it was Quick Response.
Well, you're short-staffed.
It was an insurance.
How are you gonna do this? We have an obligation to OFA.
Now I'm short-staffed.
You said you were. This is not my words, these are your words.
I said I'm short-staffed all the time, you know.
Right. So how would you have handled, being so short-staffed, taking care of all of this with mold?